Good evening with the hour beginning six o'clock. I read the school committee remote meeting setting for Monday, February 22nd, 2021. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law MGL, Chapter 30A, subsection 18, and the governor's order concerning imposing strict limitations on a number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings in town of Oxford will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We will strive to provide access to such meetings via a link or number to call in, although a similar option. In the event we are unable to accommodate saying, despite best efforts, we will post recorder sessions of the meeting as soon as possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort we made to ensure the public can adequately access to proceedings. For individuals who wish to participate remotely, please dial 1-646-558-8656 and enter PIN 814-0569-9149, or by joining the meeting link that is located on the agenda posted on the school website with the passcode of 973-754. Being the hour six o'clock, I will call this meeting to order with the preference that I did make the choice to go to remote tonight due to the weather and some people do not live in town and they have said they have a rather long commute and chances it's going to be icy later. Excuse me here. Go back up, okay? I'll, I'll start with attendance. If not, you all are present.
Present.
Mr. Burke, are you present?
I am.
Mrs. Griffin, are you present?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes, are you present?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Let the record show all members are present as well as Dr. Nash, just superintendent, and we will get in the audience. Remote, okay. Our agenda this evening, we'll hear from our student representative representative. Then we'll hear some district principals on the mid-year school improvement plans. Other major actions of business tonight is from our subcommittee. We'll be talking about the candidate profile we have from our business office. We'll hear about the NEASC report from our superintendent, the operational strategy for phase mitigation, and then we'll have some members time as well too with some of the highlights over agenda this evening. So first order of business is our student representative, Ashman.
Hello. Right before February break, we had our virtual talent show and it went pretty well. A senior Hui Tran, he won with his scooter tricks that he submitted. And it was great to see the feedback from teachers. They really like to see some different students participating in the talent portion which you don't really see when we have the in-person talent show because like there's different events that they weren't able to do in person that they could through video submission. And we also saw a lot of students participate through voting. So I think that was a really great thing that we got to do so people could participate and see what their peers are good at and what they love to do outside of school. And I've also talked to a few of my peers that's coming back from break and they felt that for a long time to rest after the stresses of earlier in the year. And finally, for student council, as the weather gets warmer, we're hoping to do something possibly outdoors, but we don't have anything planned right now. And that's all, so thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Just again, again, for the record, we are remote. Do I have, who this evening for the record will be monitoring the chat? Do I have, do I have a chat monitor?
I'm watching it for you, Mr. Chair, I can watch it.
Thank you, Mr. Canak, you all. Okay. Our next up, we have the district principals and mid-year school improvement plan updates. Uh, let's start with, let's see, let's go to high school down. So Mr. Nugent, you with us tonight?
Yes, sir, I am. Thank you for having us and Mr. Truax is available too for any questions. As you know, our school improvement plan for the last couple of years has really focusing on our NEAS visit. Um, right before the break, we did find out that our NEAS visit is going to be December 5th through the 8th, 2021, and that will continue to be virtual. So as we get closer to that, um, we will have agendas and, and, and this committee will be asked to participate in, in meeting, meeting the board that comes to join us. So our first goal, um, two years ago, starting two years ago, the faculty really got together and came up and formulated the vision of the graduate. Um, and this year our goal was to kind of bring to life, if you will, uh, the vision of the graduate through digital and print media. So the update so far is that we met, uh, we had two meetings, um, the co-chairs, Mr. Truax and myself, and then digital design, the video tech and the computer science teachers. Uh, we have identified students who are going to be working on, uh, the print and digital media. Overall, you know, a little delayed, uh, we were looking to get some of the stuff before the end of first semester, but with the way the year's going, we're still pretty optimistic that we'll be able to finish. Um, so we are progressing with that goal. The second goal, um, is working with the staff, uh, building up school-wide rubrics. That's another thing that they're going to be working on. We have dedicated, uh, we had dedicated the November and December faculty meetings. Um, and the faculty were able to review the vision of the graduate and they identified transferable skills within the vision, vision of the graduate of the plight to specific departments or subject areas. Uh, teachers also identified how those skills could be measured in a rubric to show mastery proficiency, et cetera. So our March PD day will be dedicated to finalizing those rubrics. Third goal is to continue to be able to, um, build up and strengthen our curriculum, our guidance curriculum. Uh, we were looking to roll Naviance out. Admin and guidance have had participated in four one-hour PD sessions around Naviance. Um, we are going to have a class meeting. So the seniors are meeting to talk, to discuss senior activities, um, the first Friday in March. So we're going to hop on and we're going to meet with the, the juniors and the sophomores and really start to roll out edgenuity so they could start to, um, explore colleges and careers. We're also going to have a PD for guidance on the 19th and a PD session for the teachers on 4/27. And that's really going to focus for the teachers on, um, how to write in, in upload the teacher recommendations for the college applications. Um, and then, you know, once that's done, we're going to, you know, probably have a Zoom session with, uh, any interested parent on the goings of, of Naviance. So, you know, that's where we are with our three goals at the high school. Little delayed on some, but still progressing. So still, we still feel good about where we're going and, and where we need to be. Um, you know, NEAS again is very important. So we've identified through our self-reflection and through the, um, the visit we had about a year and a half ago, the priority area, so we're going to continue to, to focus and be ready for when they come in in December. So we are available for, for any questions.
Mr. Coonan, I have one, I may. So the one question I have, Mr. Nugent, the teachers apparently are getting PD on April 27th.
Sorry?
So teachers getting PD on April 27th, is that a little bit late for applications?
Well, so we're, we're focusing on next year's seniors and juniors. So it's, it's not for, for, for next year's seniors and juniors, it's not too late. Um, so that, right, so that is, um, we're dedicating an hour, we're dedicating a faculty meeting for that, but it's focused on the class of 2022 and 2023.
And is Naviance being used this year for students and are teachers already putting in recommendations? Are they aware how to do, do that or?
So they, they are not, they, they are not. They've, they've, they've been doing the, um, recommendations the old-fashioned way, if you will.
Thank you.
It's a little disturbing to hear, Mr. Nugent. Uh, as I, as I, you know, I'm educator myself, our training on Naviance was all of one hour. And we've been using Naviance, we've had, we've had a series of updates for the last four to five years. And it's just few, and it's just emails, blast, emails go out with directions how to log in. And we have a point person at the school that can talk us through that. So that is a little disturbing that we're paying for a program, uh, especially in the Naviance when it comes to the comment app, when it comes to teacher recommendations and of a, of a data warehouse that they can all be submit electronically, especially now. So is there any way we can fast track that? I know it's getting a little late for this year, but over the next month or so that we can pilot it with, with our seniors? With the, with the final applications to get them up and running with this?
Well, this, I mean, this year's seniors, the real, the application season is, is pretty, pretty much done and finished. So we are, you know, within the next month, we're going to be focusing on next year's seniors. So they can start to, to do their searches and the recommendations can get in and, you know, we'll be up and running fully. Soon.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Nugent? Good, your excuse, thank you. Miss Bell Humor.
I'm mute, hello. So, hi. So at the beginning, we had scaled down, um, SIP, getting an echo of myself, um, to two main goals. One was focusing on, um, the culture and the, the, um, shared vision for success with the staff, which requires a lot of professional development time with my staff and, um, tearing apart the kids' surveys and things like that. So we, and I'm going to be a hundred percent honest with you, this year is nothing like I expected it to be. And my focus right now is on my staff and my students and making sure that they're safe and successful and making sure my classes are covered, which I do all the time. Um, so I'm not as far along as I would like to be with my school improvement plan, but it is something that we can continue to work towards. So in terms of the, um, first goal that we had, my hope was to have a lot of this done by the end of the year, but we just didn't, we just don't have the time. Um, so I readjusted after speaking with Dr. Nash about my goal, um, because this one is actually tied into my professional goals as well. Realigning this so that the survey, moving that to the end of this year, making sure that we have time at the end of the year to look at that and take it apart so that we're ready to run and hit the ground running with it, um, when we're somewhat back to normal next year and have the professional development time to sit with the staff and talk about it. So it's a work in progress. It's not as far along as I would have liked it to be, um, but we are moving in that direction. The other goal that we had, um, I'm hoping to be able to really work with the staff with, at our professional development in March has to do with, um, looking at the data that we have so far and trying to figure out, um, the, the gaps. They've been doing a lot of this work already. We've been using faculty meetings, department meeting times. Um, they use what little common playing time they have on, on, uh, Fridays to do some of this work. And they've been really looking at common assessment data, looking at data from previous years, test scores to really identify, um, where the kids have some gaps, not just from COVID, but just in general. And as an admin team, we've been talking a lot about what can we do? How can we adjust the schedule next year? How can we, um, what kind of summer programs can we put in place? What kind of programs can we do? So we've been doing a lot of that work. So this is also a work in progress, but I feel like this one, um, is more at the forefront of what I need to focus on this year than the vision of success that I can work with the staff on next year. But I think the student, um, learning stuff is a little bit more important. So we put a little bit more time into that as a staff. Um, so that one, I feel like we're, we're moving along with, um, not having MCAS for the last couple of years. Um, you know, we're looking at other data sources and things like that. So, um, Title I's been using, um, some online testing, some Dibbles, things like that to try to pull some data from these kids this year, uh, so that we can identify those and move forward. So everything's a work in progress and everything's moving forward slower than I anticipated because honestly, my focus has been on keeping the ship moving and everybody surviving. And, um, my staff's been great and the kids have been great and the parents have been great. I can't ask for anything better, but it is a lot to keep the buildings afloat right now, as, as all of you know. So some things have been pushed to the back burner because of that, but I think that was expected.
Thank you, Miss Bell, questions, comments? I cannot see everyone, so.
I think Mr. Burke has his hand up.
Mr. Burke, okay, I can't see, thank you, Mr. Burke, ahead.
Uh, no, I just wanted, you know, after hearing from Mr. Nugent and Miss Bell Humor, and I'm sure we'll hear similar comments from our, our other principals. Uh, I do want to acknowledge the fact that this is a tough year to be working on goals outside of keeping your school running, dealing with the ever-changing nature of, uh, COVID and everything it's done to our buildings. So hey, I just want to commend you all for still having all these, these goals. Um, but I hope you know that we understand that this is a difficult time to be trying to push new things or, or push your staff any of them there aren't pushed, so that's all.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone else? I don't see anything. And I can't see everyone's faces so they can hop in. Uh, but Miss Bell Humor, I want to thank you for that. Um, I agree that the gaps are something that is got to be looked at and you take a little, a little with that. But I really, I really pulled out of yours, what you really living in the moment of getting the kids in the moment, teachers in the moment, what's going on today and making it work. So I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
And you are excused. Mr. Quinn, please.
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening, everybody. Uh, from Barton, we have had a two meetings so far this year. Uh, just at our first meeting, we, um, we had good intentions, um, last school year to increase our after-school, activities, if you will. So that was sort of like our last goal, which obviously came to a complete stop. Uh, so our, you know, first meeting, we talked about a mad science program that we had brought in last year, but ultimately got canceled and we made sure everybody got their refund or their online course, as sort of a payment, you know, for not having the actual course. And our second meeting, we talked a lot about, which is in the plan, our 365Z kindness initiative at Barton. As you know, Chafee's been using 365Z for the last three years. And this year, the specialists who travel from each school made it a team goal to make sure that Barton was now getting into the 365 kindness program. So every morning now we have a, uh, announcements, we, we, uh, share random acts of kindness, share our kindness quote of the day. Um, and the specialists are really doing a great job. So it's a seamless transition from Chafee to Barton. So they've really been knocking it out of the park with that and we've been doing a pretty good job. We had some good discussion about that at our council meeting as those specialist teachers joined us, uh, to talk about it. So we're really happy with that progress, um, for this year. Some of the highlights, um, from the Barton plan, as you know, last summer, all of our professional development was squeezed into those first two weeks of school, um, to get us ready for this new year. But also one thing we did, were able to do, uh, Chafee and Barton, we had Envisions math training. Uh, it was, uh, way back, you think of it, it was almost forever ago. And the way we set it up in the high school, you know, COVID-friendly, these long tables, six feet apart and masks, you know, what we didn't know about COVID then and we know now is it's come a long way and that training has really, uh, paid off, as far as what we're doing there. So, um, it seemed like a long time ago, but I, I didn't want to make sure that I, that I mentioned it because we did, um, we did do that training. Something that I know Mr. P will talk about, um, is, uh, is our data warehouse. And I know that this came up at a meeting, I don't know, a couple of months ago about how can we, we have all this data. You know, we would talk about paying for it in a platform, but, um, the district has a hidden gem and his name is Katie and Phillips, as you all know, and he's working with us to get this data into an easy read platform that year after year, the teacher can just click it, all the scores come up. So, um, Rob and I are working on that too as part of our plan, um, as far as initiatives and, and keeping it, keeping them all straight, if you will. Another thing that is, uh, a highlight from the council this year is, is the closest of the PTOs from Chafee and Barton. We, we really made a conscious effort to do things together. You know, if it's mustache day at Barton, then it's mustache day at Chafee, instead of making it, you know, every Friday mustache day or something like that, which seems simple, but it means a lot to people. So everybody knows Chafee and Barton are having a spirit day today or kindness day. So I know, uh, that has worked out very well. Um, and as we think ahead to next year, we obviously want to keep our, uh, 365Z and kindness initiatives on the forefront. And, you know, we're, we're, the last few meetings we have, we want to talk about sort of what are the needs going to be next year when these kids come back? You know, if we come back to normal, if you will, the social emotional needs, tho- those kinds of things. Uh, to make sure their, you know, their mental health is being, uh, met, the, the needs of their mental health are being, um, met. And one thing, obviously, we want to continue that I mentioned at the beginning is bringing back those programs before and after school, our before-school athletic programs, the fast athletics, um, kids coming down from the high school and tutoring, uh, and more of our sort of, um, uh, science classes and, um, that I talked about at the beginning of the meeting. So, you know, we're moving along, obviously, like Amy said, we're not right where we want to be. Um, you know, our plan basically is continued from last year. We just carried it over, changed some dates and said, you know, we'll do our best to, um, to make things happen. So, uh, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions or elaborate anything that I may not have said clearly.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn, questions, comments? Anyone? I can't see everyone. Um, just my feedback. What I really like to hear, what I think is very positive, is the cohesionness of the Chafee and the Barton school communities. And I hear that where the kids are such a young formative ages, is what's going on in Barton and what's going on in Chafee, it really lends to a real seamless transition between the schools with the parents that they know what to expect. That in the kids, in the kids like, oh, I'm going through, kind of, kind of looks the same. Oh yeah, just one next step up on my education. It's not like, oh, that's how they do it at Chafee, why don't we do it all different? They're learning the Oxford Public Schools and that's something that really I would see foster through all, through all four schools, is just building off each other's strengths and they go to the next school and really it's, it's a vision of, I think, a good graduate. Uh, that they even remember what they did from Chafee to Barton and everything carries in the whole learning process. Thank you, Mr. Quinn, for bringing that up.
No, thank you, and just, just real quick on that and, and, you know, from Chafee to Barton, I, I know I thank the specialists, but I can't thank them enough because they are doing so much. And the second graders are at Barton and Mrs. Bennett's there and, um, Mrs. Sims is there and now I'm here too. It's all this, so that, that, they play a big role in that, just wanted to make sure I mentioned that.
Oh, good, thank you. All right, anyone else? Mr. Quinn, you are excused. Mr. Paul's our host, you put.
Hey, good evening, thank you. I'm really excited to share some of that. I can't express the, the word seamless is exactly what we, um, we, we are striving for. Um, I think that comes out pretty clear in the work that John and I have done, more in work, in the work that our, um, our, our coaches are doing, our cons- our consultation service with Tara Trainer has been absolutely stellar. We couldn't have, we wouldn't be where we are right now without that. Um, going back to the PD in the beginning of the year, which was all set up by her. Um, and so, and you'll see, I speak to that in my notes quite a bit. So if you have questions about that after, I'd love to talk deeper about that. But she really giving us this, making us stick to the standards. We are getting where we need to be, um, even with the hurdles that we are going against. And again, we owe a debt of gratitude beyond gratitude to all the staff and all the families. It's been ridiculous how supportive they've been. Um, and again, we wouldn't be half the plate, half the distance we are right now without that. So I broke my goals up into, well, my three goals, you know, the first goal is basically high-quality teaching. The second is regarding data and the third is about social emotional, but I chunked them into seven different activities and gave updates on where they are. Um, for the most part, once again, the Title I support, using the Title I as a coaching method through Dr. Sue's allowed us to really push that into the higher levels. And it's been absolutely crucial to have a non-evaluative person helping teachers out, um, reaching out to the teachers, working with them in a non-evaluative supportive role, um, and making sure that, again, she goes right to the standards from the consultation services from Tara and is really working with the teachers to make sure they're focusing on the right things, especially this year where we've had to thin it. You know, we, we've had to thin some of the things out to make sure we're getting those power standards in. Um, my second, second is the best practices using our tools, our, um, our invasions and our foundations and our wonders. And that sticks to it, that again speaks right to the where we are. Um, and we're sharing that not just pre, uh, preschool kindergarten, first grade at Chafee, but we're also, we meet collaboratively with all, um, four grade levels, K through four. And then Tara has actually started reaching out and working directly with the kid, uh, the preschool team, which you'll see later on in one of my goals, because that was one of my reaching goals that I didn't think we'd get to, but we really were able to do that. So we have a preschool through four continuum, which is being mapped out. Um, and again, I'll speak to that because we haven't yet decided what tool we want to use. I know that's been a thing for you guys to see what tool. And Dr. Nash has been asking us to, you know, really tax ourselves with what tool we want to use to make sure the accessing the curriculum, the standards and the maps are right there for teachers. So we're working, um, on that as we, as we go on. Um, Envisions math is our new toy, you know, it's a, it's the same tool, but it's a brand new addition. So we really had to, you know, back up and learn that. Um, staff, again, through Tara, we haven't been too, um, it hasn't, we haven't found it too difficult because it's very similar to our original. It's just a little bit more robust and a little bit actually user-friendly and a more, um, stronger online component, which given the fact that we're in a global pandemic and people need the online component, it was actually a perfect fit. Um, so we're very fortunate in that. Um, and I think the parents have found that to be a little bit more user-friendly than some of the other tools that may have been offered in the past. So, um, when I jump down to my fourth action step or activity, it's, it's collaborating as teams to review and reflect on common assessments and results in all academic areas. This one, again, I can take no credit for it, the two coaches from Barton and Chafee, Tara Trainer, um, and the lead teachers in both schools took this and just created, uh, common assessments so that we know what kids, especially this year, we know exactly what kids are doing and where they are doing it. And what, it's very simple too, it's not hard, um, it's not hard to reach the data. We're taking that, we're able to turn that out and reduce it to simplified, um, tools for the teachers to say, okay, geez, how come all of the kids in my class didn't nail this? What did I do wrong or where do I go? Well, clearly there's something there and boom, they go back, they figure it out, because those are must-dos. There, there's things that the kids need to have in those standards. They go back, they crank it out, um, and then we get the results back. And again, that's something that goes to the next one. We're talking to Katie and he's creating that data warehouse. Um, it literally took him like five minutes. I don't know how he does this stuff, but he just, the only part, he, he can take all of our data from Amplify Dibbles, all of our data from foundations, um, NWA map and now the ISIP I station and turn it into just, you can look at any child and go through their data. I mean, a first grader has a lot of data already and that's huge. So a fourth grader, boom, a sixth grader will have even more extensive data. So that's something that, um, probably something we should have been doing along. Again, just to, Dr. Nash put it on our, in our coffer to say, hey, deal with this and get it done. And, and we handed it to Katie and he ran with it, so. Um, and then again, those, then the next piece is again, we're, we're trying to find out the right tools. And this is, this is more difficult than we expected. Um, we have quite a few tools out there that are being offered by the state that are, you know, they want you to try them out. They want you to say, try this, try this, let's see, mine, you know, I have, I have the better bells and whistles, you can run this one. And, and so we're all kind of piecing out together what we want to do. And what we're finding is that we all have different, um, favorites. So we're working that out as an admin team because we know there's certain tools that are, one tool's not going to be perfect for everybody. Um, this is something that Tara's questioned, cautioned us on. She said, you know, there's always a flavor of the month that goes on, you know? One sales rep can really make you feel like, oh, this is a great tool. And then another one can come back and say, this didn't do what you needed to do, try this. And so we're really, this is, we're, we're kind of taking this year as an ability to chunk these out and say, what's, what's best for our future? What's best for the Oxford Public Schools as we grow? And, um, and, you know, it's, it's, it's been impressive to see the different tools that we're using. And so far, we, we, I have a favorite, but we'll, we'll see what happens when we all work them out. But again, um, that's just another, uh, ongoing piece because there's a lot of data tools out there. We want to make sure we're using all of them. That's just another ongoing piece because there's a lot of data tools out there. We want to make sure we're using all of them. Lastly, I, I guess my favorite area and the one that I feel the strongest about is the social emotional learning area. And I, I really got to admit, I don't think our little guys. Are feeling the effects like our older kids. I know they miss their teachers. I know they want to be in every day. But I can see that I, I, I feel like my parents are breaking down more than the kids. I feel like the kids are, are holding it and the, but the parents are, are feeling like I'm not doing enough. I wish I could do more. So we've really began the process of trying to make sure that we're able to. Get the parents to know that what they're doing is okay. Know that there's extra help out there. Know that. Nobody is being left behind right now. Nobody is missing out on these great tools and activities. We've got, we're, we're teachers, we're educators, we're going to take the kids where they are. We're going to catch them up when, when the time comes. And it's going to take a lot of work. Don't get us wrong because we know there are going to be some gaps, but. That's a commitment that all of, all of us educators have made and I, I, you know, I can speak for my staff. I, I just can't say enough. They're, they're. They're rising to the challenge and they're, we're not just surviving over there. We're, we're really thriving and we, we kind of are excited about where we're going. So. We're tired, but we're definitely excited. So. I'm sure you have questions. I'd love to talk about it.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Rob. First of all, I just want to echo what Corey said earlier. He, and you know, Amy was alluding to it. Just, just keeping your buildings up afloat every single day. I, I know as a principal myself what that takes. I mean. For example, today I walked into no internet. So that's a great way to come back from February vacation, trying to do a hybrid, you know. World. So I know what it's like and I certainly appreciate all your efforts. I know, you know, it's been past history to have you all come in mid-year. To give us these updates. I'd even like to revisit that. I guess it's my principal hat on. I just know you have so many things to go on. It's, it, you know, to ask you guys to come in mid-year to give updates. I know a lot to ask. Maybe that's something we can explore down the line, but anyways. Rob, on the data warehouse, it's so awesome to hear that. I, I had, I was pushing for that when I was in the district. It was so difficult to just backtrack, you know, data from kids in grade one, two, three, all over the map. So I'm really, really glad to hear that. Do you have anything embedded in that that talks about any interventions that will be put in place? Like I know you're going to, you're going to be warehousing data, which is great. But is there going to be anything that can reflect, okay, grade one, you know, this student received title one services. Here's, you know, an end of the year progress report like snapshot. Is that part of the warehousing?
Yeah, and I think it also speaks to, there's some social emotional pieces that can be in there with data discipline, for discipline data through Power School as well as attendance data. Which as you guys all know, attendance is a good, it's a symptom of something bigger. So. Those are key pieces, but then of course you'll be able to see, I think as far as I can tell, it's going to be. Pretty user friendly, but it's probably going to be red, yellow, green and kind of descriptive of the kids and where they fall on the, you know, the red, yellow, green levels. I'm hoping, I'm assuming will, it's, it'll be teacher by teacher. But it'll be like what interventions are needed for these children? Like I can tell you, when I hand off my first to second graders, John's teachers know. A lot more than in Worcester, what we knew about kids coming in. So like there's preparation there without any data. So now if we're, we've got the data to back it up to say. Look, these three are really, you know, the top of what, what, what you've got to go. Get with these guys is this. And so, yeah, I think there's double on that because it's not, it can't just be the academic piece. It has to be the both. So. And I know Katie's got pieces of that. I know Power School already does the attendance flags. So I would assume that with that, we can, we can flag the kids who are educationally, you know, at risk.
Yeah, no, yeah, I, I totally, yeah, no, the social emotional piece is huge. And even just the interventions that are put in place there too, right? You know, this. This student was in a, you know, a group for anger management or this student was in a, you know, a lunch bunch with, you know, with the, you know, whatever it is, just that way. That, that document should be able to be seen as the transitions happen and it's, you know, to the chair's point earlier, you know, the relationship. And the partnership you and John have created is, is really good with that, you know, that K to, K to four movement. You know, and then I know that you, you know, John and Amy are coordinating too in the transition. So. It's just huge. And the more that's identified on each student. Kind of almost a success plan for each kid is huge. So it's great to hear that's happening. Awesome. Thank you for sharing that.
And I'll say with that, we tend to do this, the individual's support plans, but we don't usually do the, 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 the things that say, you know, the high level kids, what they need to be pushed further. So. There's a big group of kids in this district that are absolutely stellar students. And so. We have created little groups of, of interventions. Last year we were really starting to get this up and running, but of course then we shut down. But. So we were seeing, you know, small groups of, of really high level. Kids who wanted more and could do more. And so that should go in a plan where someone can say, oh, I better not let this go. This could be a fifth grader who could be writing articles for a high school newspaper, you know, things to that level. So.
I'm so glad you said that too, because I know when I was at the middle school, Amy and I were trying to, trying to create that vision too with our. You know, we, we always focus on our struggling learners, but we sometimes lose sight of our higher achievers. And we just ran into staffing issues. We just couldn't make it fly like we wanted, but I'm glad to hear that you. That you, that that's on the radar for all schools because it's important to engage all the learners. So.
Dave, if I might, that start, this started as a professional, a joint professional practice goal that. Both Rob and John developed in the fall. And so they were working, you know, collaboratively on this. And then from that. First was identifying all of the data and then really talking about how do we warehouse it so that it becomes user friendly? So that teachers, all teachers can look at it. So it's a, it's a, it was a great, I think, effort and a joint goal for, for them to start working on early in the fall.
Questions, comments? Think we're all set. Thank you. We have the minutes of the February eighth meeting. At that meeting. Mrs. Forbes was, Mrs. Forbes was absent and Mrs. Griffin was remote. I entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the February eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. Burke, do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Griffin. Any comments, changes, deliberation on this issue? There be none? Being remote, a little roll call vote. So cannot be only.
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Forbes?
I abstain.
And Mr. Cooten, yes, with the record show for affirmative.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Can I feel, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, there is a, there is a comment in there. It's like it's from a parent, but wait to the. Public comment section, right, to address that?
Uh, yes, that's correct, Mr. Canaccio.
Just, just so whoever's out there, if you put comments in there, we'll backtrack to the comment, be able to. Address those when public comment is available, just so people are aware.
Thank you again, Mr. Canaccio. Okay, next to letter F, our correspondence. Do we have a report from the NEASC team visit? I'm some nugent. And had mentioned a piece of it. Do we have anything else?
Nothing on my end. No.
I'm, I'm good as well. Thank you.
But, okay, thank you. Thank you for that update report. Who are next? With the superintendent selection committee? And your candidate profile presented to us this evening.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, we have in your packet. Successful candidate profile that was developed along with Dr. Randall Collins. Dr. Collins is here tonight. I'm going to ask him to speak in a minute to talk to you a little bit about. How it was developed and what we're going to use and. Answer any questions that you might have on that. I also wanted to update you tonight that. All our search committee members have been notified of their selection. As far as I know, I didn't hear from Helen that anybody said no, so I'm assuming everybody said yes. We do have meetings scheduled for March fourth and March ninth to begin the screening process. Mr. Canaccio, Lee, myself and Dr. Collins have begun working on a set of questions that we'll have for you at a future date. But I'm going to toss it over to Dr. Collins. He'll talk a little bit about the candidate profile.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for the time tonight. Let me just run through the profile, what we did to get to the profile and what actions we took. There were seven focus groups that I conducted all virtually. Helen set them up and it was very good. We had teachers and, and administrators. And I had four interviews in addition to the focus groups. And then we did the survey, which had seventy-six responses. And so what happens with this is we take the survey and then we take the focus groups, the notes that I have from focus groups. And we sort of blend them to get the areas that are most important across all areas. So let me run through the survey first, because that will be a little different than the, the report that you have. Of the seventy-six people, there were six groups and they self-selected which groups they were in. If they were teachers or parents or if they were both, they could, they obviously chose which one they wanted to be recorded in. We don't know who is who, frankly. But of all six groups, every group selected visibility of the new superintendent. And excellent people skills is one of the top categories that they wanted in the new person. Four of the groups, four of the six groups also selected someone with a strong working knowledge of school finance. And. Two groups picked accountability and that was students and community picked accountability. So if you look at all the surveys and you, and you, and I, you have all the comments there and I'll go, I'll talk about comments in a minute. If you look at all the surveys, the four areas that showed up as the top areas were visibility of a new superintendent. Excellent people skills, school finance and budgeting and recruitment and retention of staff. There were comments as you had an opportunity to read on all those areas. None of the, there was only one comment that was removed. And I went over it with David at Quarry and that was because it was a, it was a, it was personalized. You could tell who they were talking about. So only one comment was removed. Which is really not bad considering the number of comments that you've got. On the focus groups, when you take the survey and you take the focus groups together, then the four areas that are listed on page three and the profile. And by the way, the profiles draft until the school committee approves or accepts it. If they want to make changes, we can do that. But it's a school committee profile, not mine. And so it's a draft form until it gets acceptance from you. Anyway, the four areas that surfaced, that someone who demonstrates collaborative leadership and team building success. There are a lot of comments about involving people and having a collaborative working style and not just dictating. From on top, what, what would happen, but involving people in that. Team building is an area that came up fairly frequently too, in terms of. Building the team back together. I suspect that has to do with the turnover. Over the last few years in the super agency. The second area was that someone who was enthusiastic about being in Oxford, not just as a stepping stone, not as a retirement job. But somebody who's enthusiastic about being in Oxford. And someone who is forward thinking and most importantly, a good communicator, someone that could speak and explain if they made decisions. And it was a collaborative process and not all decisions are collaborative. But if they made decisions through a collaborative process and they didn't, and everyone didn't get what they want and they don't. Then they'll be able to at least explain the reasoning behind the decision. So that people understand there was some logic to it and not just that they simply ignored what they were being asked to do. The third issue that came up was that to have a clear and well-defined transition plan into the district. And someone who is student focused. The transition plan is interesting. And I, I framed that as a clear and, and well-defined transition plan because what generally came up was, don't come with a preset agenda. Don't come in with a preset agenda of things you want to change, things you want to do, a legacy you want to build. Come in and work with us and find out what's working well, what needs to be changed, what are the strong areas, what areas can we work on together? And, and that comes, I'll have to tell you, that comes up in every search. People don't want people riding on a white horse with an agenda, dropping it and then leaving in two or three years. And lastly, understanding of school budgeting and the financial oversight of the school budget. I think this of course has to do with the difficult times we're in. Also, the issue came up regarding the middle school and understanding the financing issue on if that were to be approved. From the state financing in terms of renovation. So those are the issues then. And then you've got all the comments which I, I, we send them with you. What happens with this profile? If accepted by the board is we use it as a basis for questions that we develop for candidates. So we'll ask questions around those four areas that you see on page three and also. The areas that may not be there that appeared in the survey. So we'll develop questions which we've, which Corey and David and I have already begun to do. Around those areas that surfaced as important to the community. So that we can get a feel for what people who are interviewing. Feel about those areas. Two other points and then any questions you might have. If accepted by the school committee, this will be available to candidates. And I would probably have a copy sent to Helen that doesn't say draft, that maybe could be posted on the website so that they can. Access it there rather than have all these requests come in. Corey mentioned meetings on the fourth and seventh with the search committee. Here's what will happen at those meetings in a nutshell. On the meeting on the fourth, we will go over the questions that have been developed and suggested. And seek changes if there are changes that people want to. They would, we would, we would also hope they would read this profile before that meeting. And also there'll be an orientation session, just like we did with. Similar to what we did with the board, only a little more involved, school committee, only a little more involved. Because of confidentiality issues, when they have access to the applications, confidentiality is critical. We'll go over all that stuff with this, with the search committee. And then at the end of the meeting or the very next day, I'll release to them a link. With the applicants and all the applicants in it, all the completed applicants in it. And they'll be able to go through those and, and based on the profile and based on their own opinions, be able to. Decide if they, if it's someone they want to interview. And probably six to eight people will be chosen for first round interviews. On the ninth, after, we'll discuss who they are. We'll just, from the fourth to the ninth, they can deal with the applicants themselves. On the ninth, we'll narrow that down to who is going to be interviewed in the first round interview. That in Massachusetts can be confidential and should be confidential. It's not confidential when we release the finalist names to the school committee. The three or the two or the four, however many there are, that were released to the school committee. Then it's a public information. So as I said to you earlier. Prior to them being released, I'll call them again. And I'll ask him if they, if they offer the job, will they accept it? I'll let them know that the name will be public. And if they want to back out, this will be the time to do it. And if they don't want to, then expect that the name will be public. Just because I know you probably are curious, the last time I checked on applicants a few days ago, there were, there were twenty-seven inquiries. And there were like fifteen completed applicants. I called all those who had not completed the application. And it looks like we're going to end up in the twenty-five, twenty-six range. Only one said he wasn't when they completed. They all said they were going to. Now, if they do, we'll see. But so that's really a good number. And I'm really pleased with that number as it goes. And there's great interest in Oxford. So you should be. You should take some comfort in that. Anyway. That's where we are. Are there any questions regarding the profile, the process, anything?
I'm sorry, Dr. Collins.
What'd you say?
Are there any questions for you? Anything out there? No. Okay, Mr. Burke, turn to flip you.
That's all I had for you tonight, Mr. Chairman, unless you got any questions of Dave or I.
That's all I had for you tonight, Mr. Chairman, unless you've got any questions of Dave or I.
Are you looking for a vote on this?
Yes, we would need someone to make a motion, we need to take a vote to approve this, we're hoping to get that done tonight.
Okay. And take a motion to approve the document, the candidate profile as presented by Dr. Randall Collins.
I'll make that motion.
So move by Mrs. Forbes, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second discussion. Roll call vote, Mr. Knackoli.
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
I've voted yes, well, five in affirmative. Thank you, thank you for your service of public tools.
Thank you.
Look to our next agenda, item, excuse me?
I just said, "thank you."
Okay. You're very welcome, sir. I call Justin Linduau from the business office, you have a couple items for us this evening, sir.
Great. Thank you, Chairman Koonen, members of the committee. The first item I have for you is just a, an update. The submission of warrant articles for the upcoming town meeting on May fifth closes March thirtieth. I do have a warrant article for your approval, however, not ready for this evening, as we want to have legal review it before we bring it before you. But to give you the gist of what I'm, what I'm looking for is a, we need town meeting authorization to enter into a MOU with DCF and various other governmental agencies. And the purpose of the MOU is to seek reimbursement for foster care transportation. We can get reimbursed, a portion of our foster care expenditures through the Title IV E program. But again, we need town meeting authorization, so I'll be bringing that before you. I, I expect the next meeting. That's all I have regarding that item for tonight.
Okay, thank you. For, anything else?
The next item I have for you is the budget-to-actual report through the end of January two thousand twenty-one. I, I haven't seen any significant changes or anything that needs, any areas of concern. However, it does still stand that I, I expect the, some surpluses in, in some of your budget lines this year. It's something we will have to talk about at an upcoming meeting, as to, you know, how the committee wants to use any leftover monies, as we want to plan that out now, so we're not caught off guard by the time the end of the year comes around. The third item I have for you this evening, and I'm sorry, is there any questions on the, on the budget-to-actual report?
No, but could you just circle back to your first point?
Yes.
Could you just explain that again? We need to get authorization from the town to pursue this money through DCF, or what we need to do with it after we get it? So this is something we have to get to pursue the money, is that what you said?
The town meeting article that I'm, I'm looking at would actually do both. It's going to satisfy both. So we need town meeting approval to enter in the memorandum of understanding with DCF and the other governmental agencies. That, that's the first step, but we need town meeting approval to do so. The second part of that is to see if we can just have the, any reimbursement automatically appropriated to the school department without, without town meeting approval. So again, we, I've drafted some, some language for it, but we want to have legal just make sure it's okay, before I bring it before you for your, for your approval. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it does, thank you. Is that something you've had a discussion with the town manager on already, or is that gonna happen once the?
I've only spoke with the finance director on the town side.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome. Moving along, I have a, just a quick update on transportation. As of February eleventh, Desi has come out with new guidelines regarding student transportation. To summarize, pretty much the distancing requirements have been lifted. There is a little caveat to that, though, that's, it's been lift, the distancing requirements have been lifted for elementary students. However, at the middle and high school level, if, see how they word this. If there's a high community prevalence of COVID nineteen, then the limit is two per seat. So that, that's, that's the big update. What still stands is the, all of the guidelines that were from the fall, which was cracking the windows, mandatory masks, they urged the use of bus monitors, hand sanitizing, assigned seats, all of that is still in effect. Again, the only thing that's changed is the distancing requirements. But I just want to make a comment that this is one piece of a much larger puzzle. This is probably the first step to, to bringing all kids back, is to, to, by lifting these, these restrictions we had on, on the school buses. I'll be happy to answer any questions if anybody has anything regarding transportation.
If I could add, Mr. Chair? This, I think one of the parents this evening in the chat room asked a question that I think we're, we were all waiting some degree to hear from Desi and also from CDC with respect to relaxing some of the guidelines that would have a negative impact on us trying to bring all students back, or at least to start phasing in all students to come back for full in, in-person learning, and this is the first step in the process. However, it still is, still is connected to the, the fact that communities that have high prevalence need to obviously be mindful of that. You'll hear me talk about that in a few minutes when we get to talking about the operational strategies that have come out in the last week or so from CDC with respect to bringing students back into school on a more full-time basis.
Actually, I have a quick question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Justin, how many bus monitors are we using now?
Currently, we have two.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. If everyone's all set, I'll move on to the, the next topic here. Which, per the committee request, we'd like to talk about the Oxford High School sign replacement. Now, just to give you a little bit of backstory, the classes of two thousand, graduating classes of two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and twenty have donated their leftover student activity funds to, they put it towards the replacement of the sign at Oxford High School. So they've left us with just over eleven thousand dollars. So what happened when, when when this occurred was, I had approached the committee back in the fall and said, geez, we might be able to come up with the rest of this, this money to, to fund this sign. And the committee had agreed as part of the, you know, capital, a capital initiative to, to look at this. So since then, we've, we've done a little bit of legwork, and I, I really have to hand it to Mr. Truax, who really did a lot of the, the work on this. So I'm gonna give you a little bit, just a couple things we've looked into. The location for the sign will be relatively in the same spot as the current Oxford High School sign. The reason for this, we're looking at an LED sign which requires electricity, and there's no electricity out there currently. However, there's, there's a generator, you see that, that large device behind the sign. So I know Mr. Trex has spoke to an electrician and got a quote of about just over twelve hundred dollars to, to run a conduit underground to, to the sign to power it. Additionally, I know he has been in contact with DPW, who said that they, they could assist with digging the trench, and then the electrician could run the conduit. This, this is just some nuts and bolts of how this is going in. Some zoning, land management information. The LED signs are not, not allowed, if you will, in the Village Business District. However, Oxford High School is outside of that. Upon a little bit further research, the we don't have to abide by the bylaws, however, we, we don't want to do anything that's like crazy and put up just some giant sign that doesn't really make much sense. But I, I did want to mention that, looking into the town bylaws for zoning, we wouldn't need a special permit or anything like that to, to replace the sign out there with an LED sign, like a message board. I'm gonna move right along with the, so with those, those things in, in place, we have solicited from five different companies, just, just to get an idea how much it's gonna cost to put the sign in. To give you an idea of some cost, to just purchase the sign is roughly twenty thousand dollars. With installation is gonna be running just over thirty thousand. At this time, after we've gone, gone through this whole, all these steps and, and doing some research, we would certainly recommend that we have a company do the full installation, everything. The reason why is we want a warranty, we want some type of, somebody we can call up if there's a problem, have them come out and fix the sign, or whatever needs to happen. The worst-case scenario I kept kind of stating, stating to everybody was, we don't want to say Happy Thanksgiving in the, in July. We, you know, if there's a problem, we want it fixed, and that's why, you know, we started looking at maybe a local company to come and put this in. With that said, that's just kind of some of the, the groundwork that's been laid prior to coming before you. I did, as part of your package, provide some, some pictures of some, maybe some of the quotes that we, we have received and, or designs, rather, and as well as some other, just pictures of surrounding schools, just to see what they got going on for their signs. I just think it'd give me some ideas of, you know, what's out there. So with all that said, the, what I'm looking for tonight is maybe some input from the committee as to what they want the actual design of the sign, and when I say that, I mean the the envelope, the outside of the sign, do you want, you know, black, or a black sign with, you know, steel or something on a pole? And secondly, the other item I'm looking for is, is actually wording on the sign. There's been some talk of, you back up a little bit, if you look at the area, there's actually the Oxford High School sign, and probably roughly fifty feet away is the Oxford Middle School sign. So I know there's been some talk of actually combining the two when having an Oxford Public School sign to kind of serve both purposes. I've also kind of heard some chatter that, you know, maybe that might not be appropriate, where this is, this is for the Oxford High School, it's not to do, it's not to replace the middle school sign as, at all. I mean, however, I, I guess from my point of view, we can, we can design and, and put in whatever you'd like. But I was just kind of looking for some input from the committee as to how we'd like to proceed on this. Because I, I guess the next step is I'd like to come before you for final design approval, so we can get the schedule to be, to be put in. So again, that was, if the committee has any input as to the design of the sign, and if there's any special wording or anything on it, as it stands now, let me just remind the committee that this money was raised, was made from donations of the graduating classes, and the intent was to replace the Oxford High School sign. Some, some thoughts on that, where you could certainly replace it with an, and have it say Oxford High School, however, the message board could serve as a community board. It's not gonna just limit it to just Oxford High School. I mean, you could put up, you know, anything, district-wide messages you wouldn't want on that sign. That was just kind of my two cents on it. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I believe Mr. Truax is here as well, if he has anything he would like to add.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, so Justin's right. So, come across a little choppy, let me see if I can slow down a little bit.
Mr. Chair, maybe if I, Mr. Chair, maybe if you shut your video off, it might hear you better, you're really choppy.
So I just want to echo what Justin had said, in that you can have multiple points of access to this sign. So literally, each school could have their own, like, setup, as well as emergency management system. So if at any time the police department or the fire department wanted to put something out on that sign, they could do so as well. So I, I've learned a lot about signs, and I gotta thank Dr. Nash. She kept telling me to go back, go back, go back. When we originally started it, it was a company that was just gonna bring the sign and deliver it, and that wasn't really an option we wanted. And like I said, Justin and Dr. Nash kind of like forced me to learn a little bit more about signs, and I really wanted to know. But I think that with this sign, we originally started out with like a twenty-millimeter pitch, and all that really is the distance between the LEDs. So if you look at Auburn High School, they have a twenty-millimeter pitch. So there's the clarity of those signs that were made back then is literally like buying a projection television. I mean, those things are outdated. So I think in the fall, when one of the sign companies came to show us the different pitches, we immediately thought to ourselves that, and Justin was there as well, that we really didn't want a sixteen-millimeter pitch or twelve-millimeter pitch. In fact, it's cheaper to buy the one that we asked for a quote on, so that was the reason that we've gone back to the drawing board, back and forth. We originally thought about Oxford Public Schools, it was just as a way for every school to be able to, be able to broadcast whatever they wanted to on that sign. And also, the sign that we're looking at actually knows basically where it is in terms of where the sun is, where they can turn down the LED sign. We can also run it from, let's say, six AM to eight PM. We know Chucky's, so I've already looked across, Chucky's like really lights up that entire area. As far as light pollution, I don't think we're gonna have a problem, because Chucky's goes on real early in the morning, and it, I think it's on till ten o'clock at night. It'll kind of square off that area, if you will. So I think it's a, a win-win situation for the entire community, not just the school.
Thank you, Mr. Truax. Justin, my input on the sign. My daughter was the class president two thousand eighteen and said, hey, I want to put the sign. How do we go about doing it? Well, we need a lot of money, this is what we gotta do. And I'm not gonna speak for my daughter, but I'm now, now back to the chairman of the school committee, where the middle school sign runs parallel with Main Street. And historically, the Oxford High School sign has run perpendicular to Main Street or parallel to Carbuckle Drive, which I think is good, because it gets more visibility with that. The problem, and I'm gonna ask this to go, when you're talking about the size, dimensions, and if it's either like a race structure like the one you showed for Lester High School, or something that's more flat with the bricks in it, I think they have one in Northbridge and Lunenburg. There's all different ways to go there, is that, go to the safety officer and find out the line of sight, because there's a tremendous amount of traffic, as you know. When the other sign was up there, it tend to block the traffic a little bit, so something that we can, that can at least, it gives people the best view of what's coming, particularly we, parents, teen drivers, teachers, everyone, bus drivers. It gets a lot of traffic at the end, and it gets, it's a little hard to pull out to the left. So I don't want to see an accident caused by our sign, so I would yield to the, to our safety officer for the input on the size of that. I would like to see a little higher sign. With that, I know the LEDs will go off, and I would also request that someone speak to your neighbors on Carbuckle Drive, and I, John's first, Neeland, the Neelands. Where that would really, now it may be in their windows as well. Just being a good neighbor, say, we're putting a sign up. Any, anything that would really tick you off, or what are you looking for when we're doing the sign? So with that, and then the writing on the side, I think that's part of, part of the framework of Oxford High School, is that what best fits in as, as administrators to your school, I mean, I can go up there and say, hey, I want my name on the sign, I want this. It's not about the school committee here, it's about the students that you represent at Oxford High. And I would like to see the students involved in the design process. And, and then maybe make recommendations. And then maybe make recommendations to you to bring forward to the school committee. That's my point on it and I'll open it up to any, any other members of the board, the school committee on how they feel when we're going.
I'll jump in, Mr. Chair. I, I agree with the chair, you know, safety is first. So I'm glad that you mentioned that. Let's figure out what's the safest, you know, height in, in, you know, where you place it and all that. And I want to thank Mr. Truax for all his efforts. I'm hoping that maybe, I don't know if you looked into this, but what's projected on those signs with it. Would it be able to kind of feed into the big screen you guys have as you enter the high school? I know the middle school had, had one up on the wall too. I don't know if they can kind of talk to each other and. Project the same messages that are out front. That would be pretty, pretty good if it could do that. I, I like, I like the sign from Sign Command. That, that really looks nice. As of right now, I totally, you know, thank the class of 2018, 19 and 2020 for their donation. And I understand their first mindset was to have it be an Oxford High School sign. But I'm wondering maybe if we could reach out to the, to any of the, you know, the members of the, you know, the presidents or whoever gave us the donations, maybe just get their insight. See if they'd be open. I'm assuming they're all were K to 12 students or, you know, most of their career was in, in Oxford. So I really like the idea of having a comprehensive sign that, that touches all four schools. And can have messages up there from all four schools. I think that would be a neat adventure, but. That's kind of where I'm leaving now. I do agree with the chair. It'd be nice to maybe get back. You know, if we picked a couple of different signs or designs and see what the kids, you know, throughout the district thought, that'd be pretty neat too, to engage them in it. But I, I think it's a great endeavor and just if I'm hearing correctly, the, the, the three classes and we can certainly on that sign with. Sign Command, I know it says at the bottom gift of the classes of 2018, 2019, 2020. I mean, we can really make it, you know, gift of Oxford High School classes of, you know, really personalize it for them or however. But they were given about 11,000, right? Is that what you said, Justin? So we'd be picking up the, you know, about 19 or 20,000 on top?
That's correct.
Okay. And the only other thing, again, it's, it's not the final, but just, I don't know how much kickback we've ever gotten from pirates and our logo. I know logos are, are hot topics across, you know, professional sports and college sports. And I just don't know where we're at with that. So, you know, we just might want to think that through before we put up pirates or. A picture of a pirate or the name. I just want to make sure we, we, you know, go through all that process, but. This is exciting. I, I hope we look at something district wide. I think that would be pretty cool.
Dave, if I might interject, actually Dave Nugent and Kevin May talked with me about the potential of. Looking at changing the pirates. As a logo, if you will, I think part of that conversation might have arisen out of the fact that somewhere down the road. The gym floor would be done over. And I know that the, they tell me, at least as I understand that the pirate has undergone some revisions in the way it actually looks. And also I believe that the uniforms don't carry that as a logo. They carry simply the O. So we kind of transitioned. So that was on the radar screen for some discussion that we had, a preliminary discussion, if you will. So I, I would agree with you there. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, again, I just, I'm trying to think of all the things that could be a potential. You know, could, could cause an issue. So I just want to make sure we're thinking it through and it sounds like you're all doing a great job with that. So thank you for your efforts.
Anyone else? We all set? Okay, still do anything else?
No, that should do it. So. We will follow up with these classes, the neighbors, everything that was stated and hope to come back to you with some, some final designs next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Nash, you have a report for us this evening?
Dr. Nash, can you unmute please? Dr. Nash, can you unmute? Am I the only one having trouble hearing her?
She's muted. Dr. Nash, please unmute.
I should be on mute now.
There it is.
Thank you.
I had muted and then I remuted myself. This, this evening, I'd like to just provide you with the most recent update as Justin had pointed out to you. We have been looking to receive some additional information as the year has gone on, both from CDC. Particularly with the new commissioner, executive director coming on board and also from DESI. With respect, respect to starting to loosen up some of the guidelines that were presented last August to us. And to begin to open the door, the pathway, if you will, to, to begin discussions about reentry for students full-time. Albeit on, you know, grade by grade or school by school basis. So what I'm presenting this evening really segues and gives another dimension to what Justin. I had talked about, and that was the relaxing of the transportation guidelines, which certainly lessens the financial impact when we can put more students on buses. So you have this evening in your pack and I'm going to quickly go through, but I think it's important information, particularly for parents who might be listening this evening. The executive summary, last week, the, actually two weeks ago now approximately. The CDC came out with guidelines, really there, it's really more of an operational strategy for schools as you begin to. Phase in more in-person learning. And the communities that have been working through this, if you read these guidelines and you look at particularly the executive summary. For those of you who are in education, you will see that much of it is a reminder to some degree of what Massachusetts is already doing. But recognize that these guidelines are national guidelines and across the country, many states. For example, do not practice any of the five mitigation strategies. So these are really layered mitigation strategies that CDC feels. Will help schools begin to look at reopening. But along with that, the evidence that we know that has been supported by some of the data that has been coming in. Strongly suggests that K-12 schools, if they strictly implement these mitigation strategies. Will be able to open safely. Now again, opening across the country. May be different than what we are probably talking about in the future in Massachusetts. There are many school districts that are still remote and some are just beginning to phase in hybrid, both in Massachusetts and again, across the country. But to no surprise, these strategies include many of the essential elements that we are already doing. Universal mask wear, wearing, hand washing, distancing, cleaning your buildings and facilities and contact tracing. In particular, in addition to those consistent implementation of those strategies. They also clearly suggest that we need to look at community risk levels. And if you were to look at our community risk level, which again, reports out similar to what the CDC guidelines suggest. Our community risk levels have been in the red. They continue to be in the red this past week and last week. So you have to mitigate any type of phased in student learning. Whether it's hybrid, remote or full in person with not just implementing the mitigation strategies that I just mentioned. But also looking at what's happening in the community with respect to transmission. The other two things that, that are relatively new that we're talking about are testing and vaccination. One, we would have more control over, that would be testing. And the other, of course, we are at the liberty of the state as to when our staff will be vaccinated. Couple of other things too, that I think are important to point out to you with respect to the executive summary. Two things, two strategies, again, that Massachusetts has used since day one. That were part of our guidelines that we received in August, but also are echoed in this particular February document. Are listed on page two of the executive summary. The first being that universal and correct use of mask is a must at all levels. And we continue to, I think, make sure that that's happening in all of our schools, particularly important. And second, physical distancing at six feet. I will be honest, I thought that we would see some relaxation of that guidance. But again, it says, physical distancing at least six feet should be maximized to the greatest extent possible. And as you know, in the summer, as we were presenting our reentry plan, the school committee, as many school committees voted. For the maximum at six feet, which meant that when we came off of our remote learning. For us, we could only bring back approximately half of our students. So that would have to be mitigated. We would have to lessen that potentially to three feet. To see whether or not we could have more full in-person learning for all students. But those two tenants remain with, with some modification. In addition, again, the CDC guideline suggests that we look at community transmission. Although we recognize that community transmission isn't the strong, a strong factor. For suggesting that you will have in-school transmission, which we have been fortunate to only see that once. Since October, when we started keeping our records. You do have to consciously assess the level of community transmission as you begin to think about what models. You might move to or from, dependent on what's happening in your community. Being both your outside community as well as your school, school community. Another piece that I would point out to you is that it, it continues to be recognized. And more so through the evidence and the data that has come forward, that young children. Younger students tend to have less likely a risk of in-school transmission. Due to any kind of in-person learning than older students. That's probably should not be a surprise. Because of the activities of students, particularly at the middle and high school level or secondary level. So I think that's an important option as we start to consider what reentry might look like and what grades we might begin with, if you will. Again, some of the mitigation strategies are very familiar. As I reread this a couple of times. I could not, I thought I was reading what Massachusetts had produced for us through DESI last summer. And to no surprise, of course, Dr. Walensky comes from Massachusetts. She is the current CDC director. But encouraging cohorting and parting and all of that, prioritizing in-person learning for students with disabilities. Those are all things that we have done and that many school districts continue to do. But one of the things that I would also refer you to is at the bottom of page three in the executive summary. And that is the two types of testing, one which we have been using since we implemented contact tracing. Which was one of our five mitigation strategies that we use and continue to use. First is diagnostic testing, which really relies on, on the expertise of our nurses. When we identify close contacts and/or someone has been identified as COVID positive. We certainly refer them for testing. So that's diagnostic testing. But the other is something that is relatively new and certainly you have heard about it. And that is screening testing and that adds another layer of mitigation. I would suggest that if we are going to begin to think about bringing students back, then probably that's the layer that we need to really look at. Pool testing is something that the state of Massachusetts certainly is beginning to encourage districts to offer. I submitted our application today, although I would anticipate that we would not be reimbursed. Because the deadline, while the deadline for submitting it is March 1st. It follows a six-week period of time and based on some of my thoughts for reentry. I do not think that in trying to plan reentry, we would be looking at any sooner than potentially term four, which is about mid-April. So bear in mind that while I'm supportive of and think that the changes that have been made in pool testing. Prior to, after the January 22nd initial guidelines came out, have made all the difference. In the way we might approach it and I'll talk about that at a later date. But I do think that adding that as an extra layer of mitigation, again, it's voluntary for staff and students. So you really need to get a high percentage participating would help. Add an additional layer of comfort to both our parents. If we were to plan on having more in-person, full-time learning occur at a later date. And obviously, the last piece of this is vaccination. The sooner that our staff can be vaccinated, the better. But as you know, and you've seen, certainly if you've tried to get onto a site. Hold your breath. I, I don't know that it's going to happen as quickly as we might think. Although I think the state still thinks that by the end of April, we will be through phase two. So in answering the, the parent who asked, I think the question that is on the screen this evening in the chat. I think we've started things, seeing things happening. The pathway that we needed to begin on the state level with respect to transportation has given us the first door to open. I think the next steps for us would be, and this is my intent plan, and I will bring it to you at the April, March 1st meeting next week. Which would be to first do a parent survey. We need to survey our parents to see what their take is on this, whether or not indeed those parents who are hybrid. Would be looking to return students. And although we may not start this, obviously K-12 all at once, I would not anticipate that that would be the approach we would use. I would want to survey all parents so that we could understand where they stand. Then, as I said to you, I have already applied for pool testing. So that we are in the mix, so that we can benefit from the information that we need with respect to reflex testing. With respect to training, with respect to knowledge, if you will, around how it would operate. And then finally to develop a reentry timeline that, that's what I would submit to you maybe next week as a draft. To talk about who and when we would begin to reenter and some of the major steps. Very similar to what we did as all of us started to plan reentry or entry, if you will, last summer. It would be pretty involved. There are lots of hurdles that we would have to cross to make it safe for students. And certainly say for our staff before we could even implement. And that takes time and it takes planning and it will take financial resources. So I certainly will answer any questions that anyone would have, I hope. That, that I see, I think another question, Dave.
Yeah, I don't know if the chair wants, I mean, it's a public comment. I'm not sure. This back and forth dialogue.
Sure.
Public now, Mr. Chair, or we have to wait for a public comment because there is another question from Caitlin.
Question there. Committee members first, another public comment on this decision. Anybody members have questions for Dr. Nash? Not, yes, go right ahead, Dr. Nash.
Corey had his hand up.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I had a question.
I'm sorry. Go again.
Okay. Dr. Nash, I think you did a great job of kind of. I think you did a great job of kind of outlining all the factors that kind of have to go into this decision. I know it's like everything we've been doing since last month, it's a difficult decision, a lot of things to weigh. You mentioned the parent survey. I think that's a fantastic idea. I think in my school, we were shocked when we did our parent survey and found out. Kind of our parents were willing to send their kids back at three foot distance. So. Really wanting it. I wonder if you could also throw in a, a staff survey, just to see how your staff feels.
Yes, yes, absolutely. We would be doing that. Yep, absolutely.
I would, I would kind of parse that out by school too. I think what you said, younger students, there is a, less of a risk. So in, I would argue a greater benefit of getting them back sooner rather than later. That could be part of the plan, but that was all Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. And I think that's everyone's intention into the comments is we're still under, we're under the guidelines. The guise of Massachusetts law, DESI on how the best practice to bring all of our students back in. And that's our ultimate goal is bring everyone safely and efficiently back. And that's our ultimate goal, is bring everyone safely and efficiently back into the building. And that's where the superintendent is in charge for the school, through the school committee, to implement that plan. So not everyone has all the answers, and it can be very frustrating for so many people, there are so many different levels. And I think just patience, and we try and take the corrective steps as everyone's rolling out the process. If anything you want to add, Dr. Nash, feel free.
Sure. And just responding, I think, to the same parent who had asked the follow-up question, I certainly, a couple of thoughts. Certainly, the decision at six feet was a part of our recommendation to the school committee last summer. What we don't know, and what guidance, what evidence we don't have at this point, is what would be the impact at three feet? We know the impact at six feet. Those school districts across the nation, and particularly in Massachusetts, which represent a majority of schools, districts, who ended up at six feet, we again know the transmission is minimal. We know certainly that transmission student-to-student is minimal. We know the transmission student-to-staff is minimal, that primarily, as CDC points out in their review of the evidence, that the transmission is staff-to-staff. And we can echo that because that is what we saw in our only transmission case in this district that was within our schools. So what we don't know is coming off of the six feet, what would it look like? And quite honestly, I don't even know of three feet, if we have three feet of space in our classrooms at any of our schools. You know, we never measured space in the past. We simply put any desks that we needed, the number of desks we needed in the classroom. And if they were two feet, or 18 inches, or 24 inches, or three feet, it didn't matter. So we would certainly have to do a re-inventory, if you will, of our space to ensure that all of our students could fit in classrooms, even if we went to three feet. And then continue, obviously, with all those strategies. And one of those strategies, I think, potentially being the addition of testing, the pool testing, which I think probably makes sense for us because it also helps us to identify transmission if indeed we believe that transmission may occur, may. I'm not a medical expert, at a closer distance. So I know that that probably didn't answer your question. Vaccination is not a prerequisite to full in-school learning. It will not be a prerequisite for staff or students, which is something the commissioner has indicated a couple of times to us. So, but that's where I am. But I hope, I know that we have a brief budget meeting next week, but I am also on a little bit of a timeline, if you will. So I'd like to maybe present to you some draft format of our timeline and the who and the what about it on Monday, next Monday.
Thank you, Dr. Nash.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Griffin, do you have a report for us this evening?
I do have a warrant report for this evening. I have an accounts payable warrant that I signed for February 16th, 2021, for $257,612.35. A payroll warrant, which was signed for February 18th, 2021, for $572,475.92. And accounts payable warrant dated for February 23rd, 2021, for $105,204.54. And that is all for the warrant report this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Griffin, and you may continue with your request this evening.
So one thing that did come to mind, based on the discussion that we had this evening for the sign for the high school, was the fact that we have a dedication that we were considering and that the committee actually decided on doing for the Commander Maisely for the field. And this, it's hard to believe that he passed away November 7th in 2017. And we have still not done a dedication for Commander Maisely, even though that was something that the committee had agreed upon several times. And it's been weighing heavily on me. So I did have the opportunity to kind of just chat with Justin briefly. And I know that our field has been, or track anyways, has been resurfaced. The field is looking better than ever. Things are looking good, but we have that scoreboard there that is a little tired, needs some help. And my thoughts kind of went, after speaking to Mr. Ledoux, about, you know, replacing that scoreboard. I think that there's possible money for us to do this and doing a dedication for Commander Maisely. And of course, the thought is, when would that be most appropriate? And one thing that came to my mind is graduation this year. If we could pull, you know, things together, get a sign purchased in time, get it in place with some type of tribute to Commander Maisely, dedicated to him in regards to field having his name, or something to that effect that the committee decided on beforehand, I think it would be a very fitting tribute. We would have the community present. And we also have a class, I believe, that might have had the last impact of Commander Maisely working with them. Otherwise, I think that our community is going to miss out on an opportunity to really pay tribute to him. And we're not going to have kids that necessarily remember the legacy that he's left behind. So I just wanted to kind of throw that thought out there for future discussion. And if we could possibly get, you know, a new scoreboard to kind of finalize all that beautiful work we've done on the field, it would be greatly appreciated. So just food for thought, that's all. And thank you for everybody's school improvement plans this evening and all their hard work. As was echoed before by all many members, this is not an easy year to get anything accomplished. But it was great to hear all those positive updates, and I love hearing that data is being worked at to drive instruction. We have more connectivity between each school. I can't ask for anything more, so I'm very grateful. That's all. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Griffin. Mrs. Forbes.
Hi, Mrs. Griffin. First of all, I'd like to thank you for bringing Mr. Maisely's tribute back into the forefront for us. We talked about that a lot, as you said, and I think it's very important and a great point that you made, that the students who know Mr. Commander Maisely will be gone after this year. So that's a great point, and I appreciate you bringing that back to us. I also was curious to know if that talent show is available on YouTube, or if there's any way, if it was recorded or pieced together so that we could see that. If anybody could look into that and let me know, I would appreciate it. I would like to shout out and thank the principals and the staff. I continue to hear out in the community that Oxford Public Schools are really shining in this difficult COVID times with other towns just, just beginning hybrid. We really, we're kind of an anomaly around here, and it's nice to be proud, I have to say. So thank you to everyone involved in that, including the parents. Mr. Truax and Justin, thank you so much for the sign work that you've done. And I really look forward to figuring out what we're going to do because I think having a nice new sign there and being able to post community as well as school information would be excellent. And that is it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
As always, Mrs. Griffin, Mrs. Forbes do a wonderful job of giving us the synopsis of the night. And I don't have anything else to add to that, so thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Burke and Knacki Olling.
Yes, I agree with, and I don't want to go first ever, Mr. Chair. I'm not saying that. Keep them going first. They do a great job. To one of your points, September, I believe, and Ashley, I think, is still on here. She can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it is on YouTube. I think you can search it and find it there. But if Ashley wants to jump in and give us that full update, she could unmute. Also, it is a great idea. I'm glad that you brought that up about Commander Maisely pal. And to your point, September, yeah, I mean, a lot of the students probably are graduated, but we also could invite them back. So that's why we should be really strategic about it if we can't have a big crowd at graduation. Delay it to like Thanksgiving or something. And but we could invite everybody back, you know, all the former. Because I know there's, you know, he touched a lot alive, so that will be on the 2017 or 16 and all that. So we could definitely do that. And other than that, I just, you know, I just want to send a message to everybody out there just to continue to be patient. I mean, this ever-changing pandemic, I mean, we're coming up on a year. Who would have thought we'd still be, you know, pretty deep into this? But there is a light at the end of the tunnel. It's still a little bit off. But, you know, to September's point, this district's in really, really good shape. I think, you know, from Dr. Nash's leadership down, it's just been amazing. Everybody in, you know, parents and students and community and staff have stepped up. We're in good shape. Just continue to be patient. We all want to be back in these buildings. We all want to. But as a principal, I know my job is to make sure everybody's healthy and safe. That's the guiding principle that DESI set out back in March. Still our top priority, and we'll make it work. So keep the patience, keep being patient, and we thank you in advance for your continued understanding.
Thank you, Mr. Knacki Olling.
Mr. Chair, may I just add one final thing?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want, today we heard from MSBA that they'll be conducting a virtual tour of the middle school on Friday, the 5th of March.
December March, thank you. Okay. All right, again, I thought we had a very productive, it's never my choice to go remote, you know. And the whole, this whole meeting, something that really sat with me, the whole meeting, and I mentioned all today is like, what a really, what a restful week it was last week. For someone to be able to be, the kids, for the teachers, to take that really weak way and just get off the computer, the rusty eyes, to say, you know, something, we have no structure in our lives with this remote to really create a space that can just really shut it off for a week. You know, and I think that we'll see some good returns with that, with these vacations of, or maybe additional day if there's, I know we haven't had a lot of snow days or anything like that, but something that just to recharge the batteries. These people are working very, very hard. And it's obviously, you work it hard, you're working smart. I think we're trying to do both. But there's always that lapse of, you're just trying to do a little bit more. You're trying to reach one more student, one more parent phone call, create another set of papers, and it's just very, very taxing on, again, the students, teachers, the parents, and everyone's frustrations are sky-high. And I totally, totally get that. And the end of the day, we're flat-out tired. With that, we are back next Monday, March 1st, for a budget meeting. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is going to be on Monday, March 8th. And I think, oh, they also will start a sports season, so we look forward to that. It's, you know, you're nine inches a foot of snow there, and people are shoveling the fields, people getting ready. Students are, you know, that's a sign, I guess, it's spring, it's a regrowth. Get people out there and say, okay, yeah, we'll get over this. It may take another year, but I think every day we're getting a little better. Continue to be patient with us. With that, I put up a comment. Don't worry about that myself. If you have a public comment, we can report it in chat. And I'm looking, I don't see anything we did handle earlier. Comments by Ms. Chase. Be not, be not, to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All say aye?
Aye.
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 And we are adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night.